Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, August 21st, 2023, 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
City Attorney Doctor, here. City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our minutes from 8:00 7:23, Commission Meeting, and 8:16 23 were received. What say you Commissioners?
Okay, the minutes were staying estimated.
Board Appointments. I'm recommending the following board appointments. Reappointment of Matt Dalton to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority term will expire August 1st, 2028. Reappointment of David Ragannati to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority term will expire August 1st, 2028. Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council. Reappointment of Sandy Smith to a first term on the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council as city appointee. Term will expire June 30th, 2026. Commissioners?
Mr. Mayor, I will move the reappointment of Matt Dalton to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority. Term will expire August 1st, 2028. The reappointment of David Ragannati to a second term on the Helena Housing Authority term will expire August 1st, 2028. And the reappointment of Sandy Smith to a first term on the Lewis and Clark County Heritage Tourism Council as a city appointee. Term will expire on June 30th, 2026.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, and I know that we should entertain public comments. Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
I have no public comment online.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda, one motion. Any discussion from the Commission?
Well, Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, I just want to thank the Office of the City Clerk for all the work over the past year on our board's discussion. I think that we have been numerous, numerous meetings. I think we are getting to a really good place. Really appreciate all the input. Obviously, like all things, we continue to improve as we learn more and I'm excited to finally have some standardized practices across advisory boards so that the public knows they have consistency regardless of what advisory board meeting they attend and we know what to expect moving forward.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
My name is Ben Kuiper, that's spelled K-U-I-P-E-R, and I am the newly appointed Chair of the HCC. I sent you this letter a little bit earlier today. I was hoping to read a little bit of it for the record.
Please, go ahead.
I respectfully request that you delay your decision on consent agenda items D through F until after the HCC has the opportunity to respond to your letter dated July 25th, 2023. We received the letter detailing your decision regarding the appointment of HCC representatives to commission advisory boards via email on July 25th, 2023. Since the next HCC meeting was on July 26th, the following day, our agenda was already posted pursuant to the public meeting laws that you're all aware of. Because of this, we did not have the opportunity to draft a response and vote on it. Our next meeting is Wednesday, August 23rd, which is two days from now, and we plan to review and vote on an official response to your letter. Because of this, I respectfully request that you delay your decision on the consent agenda items D through F in order to give the HCC the opportunity to have their say in the decision that directly affects them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this matter? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I do have one hand raised online.
Oh, okay. Would you let him in, please?
Mr. Judeman.
Can you hear me? Yes, we can.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm calling in to represent the Citizen Conservation Board. As you know, we sent a letter with some concerns about the bylaws on July 20th. We have had no response to those concerns, so I'd like to raise those one more time in this public venue. On page 29, it is suggested that unless authorized by the Commission, no HCC representative shall hold a seat on the city's advisory boards. We support the move by the HCC to delay implementation of these bylaws until that has been addressed. On page 31, quorum is still defined as the number of seats, not the number of members, and members who attend online but are not visibly present will not count towards the quorum. We don't understand why we would go against Robert's Rules of Order and define a quorum by majority plus one of number of seats rather than number of members. On page 32, it suggests that no advocacy will be allowed, but advocacy is not defined. And finally, on page 38, the CCB cannot conduct public outreach without the express approval of the Commission and staff, and we think that that can be quite a delay in trying to reach out to the public. For those reasons, again, we would support delaying or revision of the bylaws to reflect these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this matter? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no more public comment online.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to accept consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commission proposals from the Commissioners? What say you?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. In addition to congratulating Helena native and the new UFC Bantam World Champion, Sugar Sean O'Malley, I would like to thank our Police Department, our Fire Department, and our citizens for stepping up regarding the fire at the Iron Front Building a week and a half ago. Volunteers from around Montana came to Helena to help the folks who were displaced. They had 17 individuals that were sheltered at a Red Cross Shelter at First Assembly Church of God. Thanks to them and their opening their arms and being so gracious, thanks to the Ellicorn Coad, the United Way of Lewis and Clark County, the General Mercantile, and the community for stepping up to help these folks in a time of need. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the Commission? Reporter of the City Attorney, welcome back.
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. I have nothing to report tonight.
Reporter of the City Manager.
Mayor Collins, Commissioners, I do have one item. I received an email from Judge Peterson this morning, and I forwarded that on to the Mayor and the Commission. And the judge is asking, in working with Judge Swingley and Judge Piskulich through the county, they're running a Kids Pack Back to School Food for Fines program next week. They've asked if City Court would like to participate, and for people with outstanding fines, if they bring in a can of food, then it reduces their fine by $5, up to a total of $100 of credit toward fines and fees in court. This is coordinated through Food Share for Kids Packs that they send home with students on the weekend. The Judge Peterson and her staff are in support of this, and she comments that the Justice Court has done the heavy lifting in organizing this, and she would like to participate. And I think it's a decision of the Commission, and if there's no objection by the Commission or the Mayor, then if it's okay with you, I'd inform Judge Peterson tomorrow morning that you're okay with her participation in the program.
No objections from me. Manager.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I think it's great. Really excited that municipal court's going to participate.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you. I have no objections. I think it's a great program. Just a quick question to the manager. Are there any, I'm not sure what we're approving. Is there, are there any implications of the program or anything that impacts budgets or otherwise, or is it simply acknowledging that we want to be a part of it?
Mayor and Commissioner, I think that there would be somewhat of an impact in terms of fines that are already on the books, and I think that many of these are past due. What I would intend to do is report back to you that here is the impact of the program. I know that it's a program we've participated for or in in the past with the county, but I don't have, Commissioner, I don't have any way of actually projecting the level of participation.
Thank you, Mr. Burton. I appreciate that. I still have no objections. I think it's a great idea, but it would be nice to hear sort of a report back on what the implications are, so next year, if it comes up again, we can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll inform Judge Peterson tomorrow that you guys are okay with her, with the court's participation in the program.
Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Ochai Ben Kuiper.
Mr. Mayor, I believe Representative Lehman is online as well.
Oh, I saw. Okay, Representative Lehman, you have the floor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you. I would just want to echo what our new Chair said, Ben Kuiper, in considering that vote delay. So, that's all I wanted to pass along. Thank you.
Regular items. Consider an exclusive use permit for Brothers Tap Work. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is a property owner at third term LLC is requesting the use of 275 square feet of public right-of-way for outdoor seating of the Tap House between the hours of 10:00 PM, or excuse me, 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The area is going to be delineated and secured by a two-inch iron pipe fence similar to what is seen out in front of the Ten Mile Brewery. Exclusive right-of-way use permits are granted by the City Commission by City Code 713-5. Part of the provision of the exclusive right-of-way use is an annual fee for the right-of-way use of 5% of the fair market value as deemed by the most recent appraisal by the Montana Department of Revenue. In this case, that 275 square feet would equal out to about $565.95. We recommend you approve setting a public meeting on 9/11 for the Brothers Tap House exclusive right-of-way use permit of 275 square feet, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Director Knopki, this is, it's not, it is addressing this issue, but it's a question a bit more broadly. So, we recently talked about parklets, and so some businesses are situated so that their outdoor space require a parklet. Some businesses are situated on the walking mall where they have a different sort of an arrangement. So, in this case, we're talking about $565 a year for the outdoor space, whereas with the parklets, we were talking about, you know, $5,000, $6,000. So, I'm wondering if, I have no objections to this request. I intend to vote in favor of the process, but I'm wondering if we could look more holistically at our businesses and our attempts to facilitate their use of our outdoor space, because it seems like where your business is has a pretty significant impact on that. So, I guess not a question, more of a comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve setting a public hearing on 9/11, 2023, for the Brothers Tap Works exclusive right-of-way use permit of 275 square feet.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Lewis and Clark County to install sidewalks and landscaping in the vicinity of the Myrna Loy. Planner Ray, you have the floor. Excuse me, Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yes, tonight you're being asked to consider a downtown TIF request that was submitted by Lewis and Clark County from Jenny Chambers, the Public Works Director for the county. Their request is for $9,000 toward a $62,000 sidewalk improvement project in the vicinity of the Myrna Loy. It's going to accomplish a couple of things. It's going to widen sidewalks and bring them further into compliance with engineering standards and the ADA, and it's going to dramatically improve, we hope, stormwater runoff issues that have been prevalent in that area and created unsafe conditions in winter months. The application was submitted in June this year and went to the Advisory Board on July 13th and was unanimously recommended for full funding approval. Their total request amounts to about 15% of the estimated project costs, and they are very near completion, if not already, as I understand. Their estimated date for completion is the end of this month. So, with that, the motion again before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Lewis and Clark County to install sidewalks and landscaping in the vicinity of the Myrna Loy. I'm happy to answer any questions you have of me and Jenny Chambers, who's present on behalf of the county as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, City Commissioners, my name is Jenny Chambers. I'm County Public Works Director. I just wanted to thank the city for the opportunity for the county to apply for this TIF grant. It was unanimously supported by the Board of County Commissioners as part of this process. This is a great project. It's in partnership with the Myrna Loy, who provided a support letter to the grant application, the contractor who's all-around construction, who also donated some of his time on this particular project, and we are excited to install sidewalks, curb and gutter, and some ADA accessibility for this area to make it a little bit more beneficial to the project on Breckenridge between the courthouse and Myrna Loy. I also appreciate the city staff. Ellie's a senior planner, helping us with this grant proposal, and also the support from the city advisory project. So, appreciate you guys' support.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Lewis and Clark County to install sidewalks and landscaping in the vicinity of the Myrna Loy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing fund to Atlas Rental LLC to replace and stabilize vaulted sidewalk at the Atlas Building. Director Brink, oh, Senior Planner Ray, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. Yes, the application, the second application before you tonight for the downtown tax increment financing district is to consider replacement of the vaulted sidewalks on Jackson Street and repair, I should say, of those sidewalks. So, Ed Santos, on behalf of Atlas Rentals LLC, submitted an application in late January. The reason it's only coming to you now, just to clarify, is that the board reviews applications on a biannual basis, so he just missed it for the January application period. But he has in total a $95,800 sidewalk improvement project because he has vaulted sidewalks on the eastern side of the Atlas Building, and the engineering that's involved with the repair of those sidewalks and the stabilization of the vault itself gets to be quite costly. So, this application went to the downtown TIF Advisory Board at the same time as the Myrna Loy project in the middle of July, and it was also unanimously recommended for full funding approval at the request of $47,900, which is 50% of the eligible costs. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe that Ed Santos, on behalf of Atlas Rentals LLC, is online to answer questions that you may have of him as well.
Thank you, Planner Ray. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Atlas Rentals LLC to replace and stabilize vaulted sidewalks at the Atlas Building.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider budget carryovers from fiscal year '23 to fiscal year '24. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, we have appropriation carryovers for the Commission to review. Under our budget resolution, Section 6 and Section 7 of that resolution authorizes the City Manager to reappropriate prior-year unspent budget authority and reserves into current-year authorized capital appropriations and other appropriations as needed. The department heads thoroughly went through their projects, and they decided which ones not to carry over that may or may not, you know, be postponed indefinitely and did make an effort to take some of those out, but did come up with this list of, you know, $40.5 million in capital carryovers. I will say that that is an unusual amount to carry over from one fiscal year to the other. It, as you look through the requests, over half of that is water and sewer projects, $21.5 million in water and sewer projects. $2 million out of the general fund are the appropriations that the Commission approved for community grants, that we have not actually distributed those funds. So, there'll be, the cash will be going out in fiscal year '24, hopefully. You know, there's 800,000 in the CAD RMS system that was approved through general fund savings that the county will match us that hasn't been expended. We have $1.7 million of ongoing expenses in the ERP system implementation for the city, so that is not only going to continue through fiscal '24, but it'll also go into fiscal '25 before we actually get all of the phases of that project implemented. It includes, appropriations include carryover for the Civic Center HVAC system, which is now in design and moving forward. We did spend quite a bit of time asking the department heads what the status of those particular projects were, and so we did include in the notes in each of the sections of what the status of the projects were so that you didn't feel like, you know, we were just carrying over to carry over to carry over to carry over, and that's really not the case. I will say, most of this has to do with either supply, you know, and real large influx of money, which is the ARPA money for the water and sewer projects, and supply chain and those types of delays in getting vehicles, equipment, getting contractors, and all of that. So, these are all projects that have been reviewed by the City Manager and approved by the City Manager, but wanted to bring them to you, to your attention. This does add to our appropriations in the preliminary budget. There were $104.9 million approved in appropriations in the preliminary budget. This will put that over $145 million in appropriations for the fiscal '24 budget with these carryovers, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any at this point.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, just a quick question. Director, do you expect that this will be the last fiscal year that we'll have to carry over most of these projects?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, I would say that some of these projects will likely go into fiscal '25.
Okay.
Especially the longer-term, bigger water and wastewater projects will likely carry over to the next year. As I noted, most of the projects were identified and reviewed as either in design or a contract has signed, a bid has been awarded, so we're hoping to get most of these, you know, out of the way in fiscal '24, but I suspect that there'll continue to be supply chain issues, there'll continue to be issues in securing people to do the work, and I would not be surprised that we carry some of them over into fiscal '25. However, like I did say, it's very unusual to have to carry this over, and I'm hoping that as things work themselves out through the economy, that we won't be bringing back such a large carryover in front of the Commission.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Do we need a motion on this, or we just need to, if there's no objection to the Manager's direction?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Dean. No, there's no motion necessary on this. The budget resolution does authorize the City Manager to approve these appropriations by bringing them to the Commission, so if you have no objections, we can just move forward.
Okay. Commissioners?
No objections.
Commissioner Reed?
No objections.
Manager Burton? Thank you, Mayor. Consider a resolution, thank you, Director Danielson, consider a resolution of intention to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena Water System and to set a public hearing date for September 25th, 2023. Director Leland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This is a resolution of intention to set the water rates for all the customers of the City of Helena, and we did bring forward a little while ago, we hired a company to come and do a rate study for us, and they had proposed a 4.7% raise, or 4.7% increase in the water rates. However, with staff looking at it with the influx of ARPA, how many projects we are carrying over, just what we can get done with capacity-wise with just doing capital construction, because that's one major item that's driving this, that we felt that we should just say zero increases, keep everything the same for this year, and then reevaluate it when we get everything done and positions filled on that. And then also, just to give you some background, is this year, some of the other cities around the state are doing increases, and just to give you an idea of what other people are doing, Billings is doing 10%, Missoula is 4%, this is just for water, Great Falls is 10%, Bozeman's 12%, and Kalispell is 15%. Butte is the only other one in the state that is staying at 0, so they also have wastewater, so I will give that in the next one, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Director Leland. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd move to approve a resolution of intention to set residential and commercial water base and usage and usage rates and set a public hearing date.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider a resolution of intention to set rates for all customers of the City of Helena Wastewater System and to set a public hearing date for September 25, 2023. Director Leland?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Basically, the same as what we talked about with the water, but the wastewater fund had less cash flow than what the water did, and then also didn't get a huge influx of $13 million of ARPA. So we are asking for an increase of 4%. The rate study did say originally to do four and a half for two years, but then they did a few more conversations with staff, and then they recommended two years for two consecutive years coming up. And that's why we went with the four, because it was supposed to be in fiscal year '23 that we did the first one. So that is why we are asking for 4%. And then there's a mistake in the memo. It does say that would be only an average if you use what is the average consumption of $1.05 a month. It's actually $1.30 per month. So we will make that change. And then when we do the public notice and the inserts into the water and sewer bill that is required, it will show the $1.30. Again, just to give you some examples, is Billings is doing a 6% wastewater, so they are doing 10 and 6, so that's 16 total for both water and wastewater. Missoula's doing nine, with a total of 13 for both. Great Falls is doing another 10 for wastewater, so both of their utilities would be 20%. Bozeman is doing 12 and 12, so that's 24%. Kalispell is doing 15 and 15, so that's 30% increase over both the rates. And then Butte is staying at zero. They have some federal money because of the Superfund site and everything that's out there, so they are staying at zero. So looking at it, we are the second lowest of only a combined of 4% for both of the utilities. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from the Commission? Are there any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution of intention to set residential and commercial wastewater base and usage rates and set a public hearing date.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a preliminary plat for the 1409 Poplar Street Minor Subdivision, creating four new lots from .48 acres, and to adopt the finding of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described as a Lot 2R and 4R in Block 13 of the Flower Garden Addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on amended plat of Lot 2, 3, and 4 in Block 13 of Flower Garden Addition filed under document number 325377. Planner Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your consideration tonight. I have the creation of a four-lot subdivision at 1409 Poplar Street. This is located on the south side of Poplar Street, between the intersections of Poplar and Sanders and Poplar and North Roberts. It currently has a single-family dwelling with a detached garage on the west half of the property, and the east half is presently vacant. For a minor subdivision, no planning board meeting or recommendation is required. No public hearing is required for preliminary plat. It is presented to you tonight as a regular item. Public notice has been issued to adjacent property owners within 150 feet of the property. This minor subdivision does not require a full environmental assessment. The applicant did provide their summary of reasonable probable impacts. This is a .48 parcel, as I said, currently used as a single dwelling resident. It is zoned R3-T number 25. Adjacent to it, to both the north and the east, is more single-family housing. To the south is Lincoln Park, and to the west is the administration building for the Helena School District, former Central School. As you can see, here is the character of the neighborhood for the residential area, both to the north and the east, and the park and school to the south and the west. The preliminary plat splits Lot 2R into two lots, and Lot 4R into two lots. All lots have legal and physical access via Poplar Street. There is a 20-foot alley platted, but it is not currently constructed. It is used as part of an extension of Lincoln Park there. All utilities are created through a 30-foot, and then tapering down to a 20-foot easement that runs the length of Lots 2R2 and 4R2. Here's the site plan showing the location of the existing house and the removed garage, and that all new proposed lots do conform to existing zoning. There are no new non-conformities created, and that all proposed parcels can be built, meeting setbacks and city-required parking. The application review identified no adverse impacts to agriculture, agricultural water facilities, local services, natural environment, wildlife, wildlife habitat, or public safety. For local services, there was one condition proposed to mitigate any potential impacts, that sidewalk infrastructure along Poplar Street right-of-way shall be upgraded to meet current ADA and pro-wags standards. In the 2019 growth policy, this area is designated urban. This means that it's proposed for moderate to high-density residential uses and associated public uses. The R3 zoning district that it is in provides for a mixture of residential structures to serve the housing needs of Helena. It has been identified that this proposal meets the growth policy goals and objectives to support increased housing, encourage infill development, and promote efficiency and minimize impacts on the resources, the environment, and the city infrastructure. As of August 18, there was one request for further information regarding the lot configuration, but they gave no further public comment. City staff recommends that the Commission moves to conditionally approve the preliminary plat for the 1409 Poplar Minor Street subdivision, creating four new lots from 0.48 acres, and adopt the findings of fact and conditions contained therein for the property legally described as Lots 2R and 4R in Block 13 of the Flower Garden Addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the amended plat of Lot 2, 3, and 4 in Block 13 of the Flower Garden Addition filed under document number 325377, with the following conditions of approval: Sidewalk infrastructure along the Poplar Street right-of-way shall be updated to ADA pro-wag standards as required, and approved by transportation systems and public works departments prior to the final plat. Does the Mayor and the Commission have any questions for staff?
Thank you, Planner Holland. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple of hands raised, if I might.
Please.
First, I have Karina, if you'd state your full name for the record, please. Can you say that again? I can barely hear you. I apologize. There must be a technical difficulty. If you give me a moment, I will allow the next participant to make comment. We'll see if we can assist you. Laura Langdon? Say again, Laura.
Laura Langdon.
Thank you. Go ahead.
What were the four buildings? I think I might have missed that, the four structures that are proposed to go on those four lots?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, at this moment, there are no proposed structures. This is purely for the separation of the lots into four lots.
Okay. Is there any intent, I guess, then, to build, like, four single-family homes on those four lots? Is that kind of the purpose of separating this into four?
No, no. We're not going back and forth.
Okay.
Do you have any other comments?
Yeah, I was just curious if that was kind of the intention was in the future to build four separate single-family homes?
Would you repeat that, please, ma'am? We, I don't think the clerk got it.
Is the future intent of separating the property into four lots to build four separate single-family homes?
Are you done with your comment, ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, next, I have Karina. Again, if you'd please state your full name for the record.
Karina Beaman?
You have the floor, Karina.
Thank you. I am currently residing in the house to the east of the proposed lots. The letter we received in the mail does show that there are four buildings that are proposed to be built. And I'm just wondering, based on the map that I received, it looks like they're pretty close to the property line, and I've got matureties between our lot and the lot that is 1409 Poplar Street. And I'm wondering if that's going to be taken down, or if there's going to be any cost to our structures. We have a fence. I don't know if they're planning on building a privacy fence due to being so close to the property line.
Did you get, did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, the comment has been recorded.
Okay. Do you have any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, maybe just a brief comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's, it seems there might be a little bit of confusion about how, what happens during the public comment. But I would just say, if there are members of the public that have questions about the project, because we don't engage in a necessarily question-and-answer back and forth during the Commission meeting, I'd recommend submitting those questions to our Community Development Department. But would just like to maybe have the staff tell me if I'm wrong. But the only thing that we're considering approving right now is amending this, or creating this preliminary plat to just create new lots from the land that's currently there. The applicant will then submit further plans that specify whatever their plans are for the property. Would you say that's accurate?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, yes, that is accurate. This is purely for the separation of the land and not for any of the proposed use of the land.
Thank you.
I hope that it answers some of those questions that were posed to us. I'll, any other comments? Any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have a hand raised, but it appears that Karina has already spoken in public comment.
It appears what?
Karina has already spoken in public comment, unless you'd like to entertain it.
Sure, put her through.
Zach Beaman, her husband. I just, we had reached out on questions regarding the lot placement, and we were given a, an actual build map, and were told that we could ask questions during the Zoom meeting, so we didn't express it further. Our emails are dated July 27.
Madam Clerk?
It was not expressed that we reached out, even in a comment prior in this meeting. So I'm a little concerned that we're kind of being left in the dark.
Sir, I apologize. We did not get your name at the beginning of your comment. Could you please state your name for the record?
Zachary Beaman, B-E-E-M-A-N.
Thank you.
When, basically, on our original reach-out for any, you know, details there, her response was, I understand the four houses are now based on the driveway, if we can answer, ask any questions as of when the Zoom meeting takes place, August 21. And we were given an attachment with six, you know, build plans, driveway plans, building locations, one of which was buildings within five feet of our property line, according to their building plans.
Thank you, sir. If you reach out, I'm sure they'll be able to answer those questions you have. You, it's been placed on the record now, so you will be able to...
We thought that this was the, this was for...
Your comments have been placed in record, so I'm sure they'll be able to answer those questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other comments online.
Thank you. I'll entertain the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to conditionally approve the preliminary plat for the 149 Poplar Street Minor Subdivision, creating four new lots from .48 acres, and to adopt the findings of fact and the conditions contained therein for the property legally described as Lots 2R and 4R in Block 13 of the Flower Garden Addition to the City of Helena, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown in the amended plat of Lot 2, 3, and 4 in Block 13 of the Flower Garden Addition filed under document number 325377.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the Commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution recreating a special district to annually finance the management and maintenance of public trees on public right-of-way and in city limits. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So tonight, we have the second public hearing for the recreation of the Urban Forestry Special District. As you recall, we had a first public hearing, and we sent out notices to 13,100 property owners. Included in those were city parcels, so the city, you know, was recipient of over 300 of those letters. During the process, we obtained feedback. We got 1,531 responses from the public. 844 of those responses were those that did not support the recreation of the special district. But we did receive 575 responses that did support the recreation of the district. And there were 110 responses that were deemed ineligible. And I believe that the city clerk mentioned to the Commission earlier that that could be because they didn't have a signature on their form, which by statute they're required to, or they didn't have the required number of signatures on their form. If two people own the property, only one property owner would have signed, and so that would have deemed them ineligible as well. They may or may not have had the correct property inform- or may not have had the correct property information on their response. So there were a variety of reasons why they were deemed ineligible. And all of those comments were entered into public record and are available to the public for viewing. At this time, the 60 days of time of protest has expired, and we are asking for the commission to consider the recreation of the special improvement district and to set the rate, which will remain the same, at $39 per tax parcel per year. I think that's all I have, except for I just wanted to note a few items about the special district. And a lot of these facts are on our website, and we've done a pretty good job and thorough job of trying to communicate to the public the benefits of the district. This district has been in existence since the 1990s. However, in 2010, the commission at the time changed it from a regular maintenance district into a special improvement district. And so, a few years ago, the legislature then changed the law to have us come back and, to the public, and reconsider the special district every 13 years. And so that process includes the same process as if you were going to create a district from scratch. And so that's what we did. We received a survey of the land and all of the properties that would be included, which are currently the city limits that have been annexed in the city since the last time we had the survey done, which was in 2010. This district provides funding to care for over 11,000 trees in the city rights-of-way, public parks, and some open spaces. The few staff that do this do a wonderful job in pruning and planting and the long-term tree maintenance of the urban forestry within the district. There's also a program where residents can ask to have a tree planted, and they can get in queue and have their consideration in line. It's a first-come, first-served basis. They're also welcome to plant their own trees in the public rights-of-way. And while they water the tree, the city will continue to maintain the long-term health of the tree. So those are just a few benefits that this district provides to the city. I find it a valuable service that the city is providing, and this provides the necessary funding for those arborists and seasonal staff to perform their work. And I'm open to questions if you have any.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Collins, just, and Commissioners, a quick question. Director Danielson, could you put on the record what the percent of protest was?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Can somebody do the math for me? It's 844 out of 13,100.
Mayor, Commissioners, just for the record, the number of protest was 6.4% overall.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It's a requirement to have a minimum of 10% of those that pay into the program to protest in order for the commission to consider a referendum. If 50% or more protest, then it stops and doesn't go further for another period of time before we can bring it back to the commission for reconsideration.
And, thank you. And I know, because I was asked about this by some members of the public, and they were saying, why are you bringing up new taxes? And I want to say, yeah, this is nothing new, right? This is something we've been doing from time immemorial. It's just that we are recreating it because of what the legislature had put in place. Is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct. This is not a new program. Again, it's been in existence since the 1990s. People are currently paying $39 a year on their tax parcel. The rate that we're proposing going into fiscal '24, it has not changed, $39 per tax parcel.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank all the work that went into the public awareness around this initiative. I've gotten a lot of good comments from the community, people saying they didn't realize how much our arborists did, and all about the urban forest. So I will be supporting this, and I just want to thank everyone who helped educate the public a bit more about the urban forestry program. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. I'll not be supporting this resolution that recreates this district tonight. As I've said before, and I'll say it again, my lack of support is not because I feel the program and the work done by the urban foresters is not of value. It clearly is. They accomplish a great deal to protect and maintain the city's trees in parks and in public rights-of-way. But for me, therein lies the rub. Property owners are being levied on their parcels for work that does not benefit their parcels. Rather, funds are expended on city-owned trees and in city-owned property. And according to Attorney General Opinion, Volume 46, Number 7, "A Tax Is Levied for the General Public Good." It creates a lien. An assessment is imposed against a specific property to defray the cost of a specific benefit to the property, the benefit to be commensurate with the assessment. The difference between a tax and an assessment is not determined by how it is referenced, but rather how it is calculated and whether it benefits the public generally or operates to benefit a specific piece of property. So my lack of support relates to the way the program is funded by a district which levies an assessment that seems to me, in reality, a tax. And I think the distinction is important. Taxes are limited by state law and by the city's charter, and taxes also cannot be levied against tax-exempt properties, of which there are many which pay in Helena, which are paying into this program. So for those reasons, I can't support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney, Attorney Doctor, I know you gave an opinion on this before, this assessment and taxes. Would you repeat that, please? That opinion?
Mayor, yes, thank you. The opinion that Commissioner Logan has referred to was based upon a different subject matter, not this one in particular. This one in particular is much akin to a district court decision that the City of Helena received on the street maintenance district that was created and assessed through a methodology required by statute. That one allowed for the city to create a district to assess streets citywide. And because we get, that, because the members of the community get the benefit of a city street network, much like in this circumstance, the members of the city get the benefit of trees and the beautification and the environmental impacts, the safety impacts that curbside trees and a network of green provides in the city. And so, it is allowed, in my opinion, through the similarities with the district court case in this matter, and is more similar in this case than the one referenced by Commissioner Logan. And that's the reason why we are continuing with the district in this case.
And that's the reason I'm supporting it, for all the above. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, again, my name is Robert Frossel. I'm here on behalf of Growing Friends of Helena in support of the reauthorization of the district. As has been brought out, the trees in Helena are an asset, and it's your responsibility to care for that asset. And it's a, much of an asset is the water, the wastewater, the streets. And the asking for the reauthorization of the district and for the continuation of the fee simply puts us in a position to maintain what we have and hopefully be ready when the worst comes to worse and we are hit with a ash-bore infestation, and the trees are going to have to be replaced. And we have a district in place, and we're ready to go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
This, I am Phyllis Michelson, and I live in Mountain View Meadows. I'm not, I don't know if I'm for or against this, but I do want to tell you my experience with it. I moved into Mountain View Meadows in 2010. It is in the city limits. The streets are city streets. There have been lots of trees planted on the boulevards. I went back and looked, and we have been paying the fee the whole time that we have lived there. And I have not seen the city do one thing for those trees, and they are in terrible shape. We, in fact, we have some things that we've checked back, and they were initially planted. And they really aren't legal to even be planted where they are. So what, and my neighbors have been talking about this for a while. So what I'm hoping is that maintenance of public trees on public rights-of-way will help improve this. But I'm not certain that's going to be the case, because however it has been functioning in those last years would have to be changed quite a bit for that to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm James Striggers. I live at 1520 Piosta. I've been a member of Growing Friends for a little over 20 years. We were supportive of this urban forestry district 13 years ago. We're still supportive now. We think that this is important for the city. The fact is, is as much as we try to do with Growing Friends, it's just too big for us. I think it's too big for any of us individually. We really need the city's help with the trees here in Helena. And that's both removing the trees that need to be removed and planting new ones. We've been real impressed with what the city's done over the past 13 years. They've, we appreciate the knowledge and skill of the arborists, the urban arborists that we have. This, in my view, allows the city to be proactive in terms of taking care of trees, not just reactive, proactive in terms of removing trees, proactive in terms of getting good stock of trees. We think there's an economy of scale where the city can get trees a lot more reasonably priced than just a regular homeowner can. The thing is that, you know, the city is working on city trees that we all benefit from. It's not private property. And when it's not your property, people don't want to... Is my time up? You know, you don't want to, you don't want to spend time and money really on a tree that's not yours, although you're going to benefit from it. So I guess that's about all I had to say. I just wanted to hope that we can reauthorize this. We appreciate what has been done, and we know that they'll continue the good work that they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any others? Do you have any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any public comment online.
Okay. Consider a resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you need a motion?
Oh, yeah, I was about to say, I'll entertain a motion. I was just...
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution recreating a special district to annually finance the maintenance and maintenance, the management and maintenance of public trees on public rights-of-way and in city parks.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Nay.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Public hearings. Consider, where are we? Okay. Consider a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the amortized loan issued under residential energy efficiency and renewable energy loan program for tax year 2023. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the public hearing to recoup the costs of the energy efficiency loans, primarily solar panel installations on people's homes that they can borrow for 0% interest to the city. The city's issued about 45 interest-free loans in a total amount of a little less than $500,000. The astounding balance as of June 30th on those loans is $271,902. This assessment allows us to move forward and recoup the cost of those property owners listed in the resolution and put back toward funding future loans. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the amortized loans issued under the residential energy efficiency and renewable energy loan program for the tax year 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussions from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for tax year 2023. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight, again, is the public hearing to recuperate the costs of the 0% loans that we've issued. There are currently nine property owners that we are collecting the infrastructure cost from with the passage of this resolution that'll allow us to put these recruitment costs on their tax bills for tax year 2022, but fiscal year 2024. Tax year 2023. Thank you. Sorry. Get those confused.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost reimbursement for water and wastewater infrastructure installed by the city for tax year 2023.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special street lighting district fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the public hearing to set the assessments for the lighting districts within the city limits of Helena. We currently have 54 lighting districts throughout the city. Each of those is a separate self-balancing set of accounts, so each lighting district has a separate fund that must maintain an account balance. We have a reserve equivalent to 50% of the cost of the actual electricity and maintenance. In assessing the recent increases in electricity, we evaluate each of the fund's cash reserves... In assessing the recent increases in electricity, we evaluate each of the fund's cash reserves in addition to our estimated costs for electricity and maintenance and overhead in fiscal '24. While some of the districts may experience a little less, some districts may experience a little bit higher. On average, throughout all of the districts, it's about a 5% increase in fiscal '24, based on the calculations that finance has done for evaluating the fund balances of each of the districts. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have none on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the special street lighting districts for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all property within the districts.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, Commissioners? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year '24 and levying assessments on all properties within the district. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the public hearing for the open space maintenance district assessment. There is currently no proposed increase in that assessment. It is a base assessment of $20 per tax parcel, and for properties that have greater than 2,222 square feet of impervious area, it is equivalent to .00801 cents per square foot. This maintenance district funds are very limited open land staff to maintain all of the open lands, including all of the fossil fuel burning and management. Most of the work is funded through grants that the city receives from federal funds, and our open lands manager does a terrific job in securing those grants and carrying out the work. And this secures the funding to maintain the staffing level as it currently is and to provide the maintenance of our open lands.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
I have no public comment on line, Mr. Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the open space maintenance district number one for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution levying assessment for improvement of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alleys and approaches in the city of Helena, Montana for tax year 2023. Director Danielson?
And thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the public hearing to set the assessments to recoup the cost of our sidewalk loan programs. In the fiscal, in the last season, seasonal year, which was '22 and the beginning part of 2023, we entered into 14 new sidewalk agreements with residents for approximately This allows us to move forward with recouping the cost of those loans and paying back the costs that went into paying for the infrastructure.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
I have no public comment on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a resolution levying assessments for the improvement of sidewalks, curbs, gutters, and alley approaches in the city of Helena, Montana for the tax year 2023.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution levying assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent public rights-of-way. Director Danielson?
And thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. So back in 2015, the commission passed Ordinance 3210, which amended property owners' responsibilities for removing snow and ice from adjacent sidewalks on public rights-of-way and created a civil enforcement procedure that allowed the city of Helena to remove snow and ice from sidewalks on public rights-of-way when the property owner fails to comply, and the bill of the adjacent property owner, and bill the adjacent property over for the removal costs if they haven't paid the city upon receiving the bill. In this last winter, we had eight properties that we're assessing. The fine has a base fine of $50, and then plus the cost of the snow and ice removal. And with the passage of this resolution, this will allow us to put this, recoup these costs on the property owner's tax bill in tax year 2023.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission? Any public comments to this?
I have no public comment on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution levying an assessment on properties to recover the cost of removal of snow and ice from sidewalks on the adjacent, on the adjacent public rights-of-way.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussions from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the public hearing to set the rate for residential solid waste collection. It's being proposed that the assessment go from $176.10 per year to $194.10 per year. That's an increase of $18 annually. This particular fund is depleting its cash reserves, and looking forward into being able to maintain debt service needs to have a rate increase considered by the commission. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or I know that Director Leland is here as well.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
I have no public comment on line, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the collection and disposal of residential garbage and refuse for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties receiving residential solid waste collection.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussions from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year '24 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight's the public hearing to approve the assessment for the stormwater utility. After review of the fund, the department head has decided that they have enough cash reserves so as not to increase the stormwater rates for fiscal year 2024. The residential base is set at $46.16, with those that have property more than 2,222 square feet adding an additional .02524 cents per square feet. For commercial properties and mobile home, they have a base assessment of $71.81 per month, and an additional assessment for those properties over 2,222 square feet of .03926 square feet, cents per square feet, over the base assessment. Director Leland is here. If you have any questions in regards to that analysis, other than that, I am happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the stormwater utility service area for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties within the service.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this topic? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the option of street maintenance and improvement district one for fiscal year '24 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight's the public hearing to set the rate for the street maintenance district assessment. Well, I know that the Transportation Services Director and Deputy Director have put a lot of analysis into the street maintenance assessments at this time. They're proposing no increases for fiscal '24 so that they can continue their analysis and bring that to the commission in a more thorough way for your consideration. The base amount for vacant or residential lots is $206.16 per year. Mobile home parks are $82.46 per year, and a commercial is a base fee of 360 per year, plus anything more than 6,000 square feet is .06 cents per square foot, up to 1 million square feet, so it's capped at 1 million square feet for commercial properties. If you have any questions, I am happy to ask them, or Director Knopki can answer them as well.
Thank you, Director. Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the street maintenance and improvement district number one for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year '24 and levying assessment on all properties within the district. Director Danielson?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe this is the last one from me tonight. This is the landfill monitoring special district. There are no proposed rate increases for this special district. The base is, or the fee is set at $7.23 for residential, and then it's tiered for commercial properties that have a square feet between 10,000, less than 10,000 square feet, all the way up to more than, more than 250,000 square feet. This is a special district, and so it is being evaluated for recreation as well. And I know that the Public Works Department is working on the facts and the communication to, to send out communication to our public again for the recreation of this district as well, but for now, we're proposing to set the assessment for the existing district. Any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment on line.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution specifying the assessment option for the landfill monitoring and maintenance district for fiscal year 2024 and levying an assessment on all properties within the district.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion from the commission? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. At this time, I just want to thank Director Danielson, Leland, Knopki, every one of you that put work into this. I know it wasn't easy, but I'm happy you were the one tasked with it and not me. So at this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the commission? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised on line. I did receive one written public comment that I'd like to read into the record.
Yes, please read it for the record.
Laura Langdon, I believe this was in relation to Item 10G. Are the four plots large enough for building a home on? Do they meet a minimum size requirement? That is the only written comment I have.
And community development, if you can reach out to those people and just try to answer their questions, that would be nice. Thank you. Any other comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.